Good evening, welcome to the next school meeting. It's Monday, February 22nd, 2021. We're in the students' play largely boardroom at the H U seven building. Like to call the meeting.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayhart?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Ms. Gropkowski?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
We do have a quorum, we will continue. I will note that the meeting has been noticed for state statutes. Do you have any community participation? Got to judge them by the audience, probably not. But do you have anything to read in?
I do not.
All right. Special reading that. Move to the high school student participation.
All right, let me find the best setting here on this stuff. Okay, um, high school. Mr. Keel, you're up. Do you want to introduce the group?
Uh, yep, we got an unmic sharing mute here. Hello, um, tonight we're going to talk about esports. Something that's been going on in the high school for, this is their fourth year. Um, been very successful, been attracting, uh, another group of kids that can showcase their talents. Um, Mr. Eisertlath has really started this and taken the lead with it. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to him and then he's going to have some kids talk and answer any questions you guys might have.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, so yeah, so many of you know me, Jerry Eisertlath. I teach physics and computer science here at the high school. And, uh, this is our fourth year, like Dan said, on e, uh, the Elkhorn esports team. Uh, basically what we're doing is we created a, a slot that we felt that was missing as far as kids go. Um, those kids that don't quite, uh, think that sports is the thing for them or we're not in Ahosa, they're not in the Skills USA, but something else. So we try to fill another one of those holes that we had to try to get more of the kids involved in just school activities. And so we play four sports, basically. We do two in the spring and two in the faller. Um, and then we also do a fifth day during the course of the school year. So every Friday during the week, we actually have an esports club where kids can come in and play video games with other kids and just start to make friends, socialize, do all those kind of things together. Um, and as long as they're, um, school appropriate games, we don't have a problem. So, um, we do that on Friday. We usually have to kick them out at 4:30, but for the rest of the week, we actually can, um, we work on our sports teams. So we just got done with an extremely successful fall sports. Uh, we moved up this year to division one because of the size of our school has been growing. And we had, uh, our freshman team, we had a full, almost a full freshman team on our Super Smash Brothers team. They actually wound up going all the way to the semifinals to the final four. So we're looking at some really exciting things with that. Uh, this, the, the spring season, we just started right now. We have Rocket League, which is basically playing soccer with automobiles. So they, they move the automobiles around with this big ball and they try to knock it into an extremely large net. And it's three on three. We have a phenom here at this school. Some of you have already heard about him, uh, Aiden Hamilton, who just got a 60% scholarship ride to Northwoods, uh, which is up in Michigan, the NCAA state champs for Rocket League. And they've already told him that he's got a spot on the varsity team. So, I mean, this is big, big, big deal. We've, something in our water here in Elkhorn. We bring really great esports players. We've, uh, been doing this four years. We've had two state champions and we've had four state runner-ups. So we've done really, really, really well in this, uh, this new genre of gaming. So, um, to tell you all the pros and cons, I'm going to pass the torch to Mike Dolly, who's my counterpart and newest member of the, the business department here at the high school. He's going to talk a little bit about that while I get the kids ready to go ahead and say their piece here.
So essentially in the last four years, this has really blown up across the state. And I was just looking at some of my numbers and we started with seven schools. Um, and now I'm up to 187 contacts from around the state. I know the Elkhorn Parks and Recreation Department is starting to get on board with this as well to host community events for it as well. The whole UW system now all has clubs and organizations competing in national competitions. Um, and we even have a few schools around the state that are starting to offer scholarships. Um, probably the biggest name that everybody in here would know is Amon Green, uh, the Packer running back. And he's actually the director of esports at Lakeland University. So, um, it's, it's growing exponentially around the state. We'll, we will be over 100 schools by next year. Um, and I actually run the, the state association as well. So I'm president on, of that, on top of everything that I'm doing here at Elkhorn as well. So it's, uh, it's fun to be back in the classroom, getting to work with these students. Uh, and I'm happy to spend a lot of time after school playing video games with them, so.
Okay, so what we have today is I've got three of my seniors who, um, are on my SMITE team. Now, SMITE is a, what we call a MOBA game. It's a five versus five player base, almost capture the flag type thing. So that's what they do. They have to work together as a team to meet certain goals, um, you know, uh, cover each other. Basically your typical sporting mindset, but on a computer game. So I'm going to have them go ahead and just talk a little bit about what esports has meant to them in the four years that they've been here and, uh, what they like about being, you know.
Um, hi, my name is Ella Bruce. Uh, I joined esports team last year. Um, I started playing League of Legends in this year. I recently joined SMITE. Uh, I can speak for these personally on my behalf. Uh, I have made a lot of memories and bonds through esports and I think that's something that was most substantial for me. I mean, these two right here are probably my best friends and I hang out with them all the time. And I feel like esports really just brings us together and everything like that. And I think it has really formed relationships that I'm going to have for the rest of my life. And also I feel like it teaches me a lot about, um, teamwork and team bonding. I mean, recently this year, we've gotten a lot of people on the JV team for SMITE and it's really awesome. We had practice after school here today. It's awesome to see all the kids get together. These are people that might never meet throughout the school without something like esports. And it's really cool that Elkhorn is able to have a program like that because I think it really brings people together.
Uh, I'm Jacob Simkowski. I joined during my sophomore year, again with the League of Legends and then moved to SMITE this year and we started offering it. Um, I think esports has helped me a lot with my organization and leadership. Like Ella said, this year we've gotten 10 to 15 new players interested in SMITE. And we've been organizing practices and scrimmages and games between us to help grow our team. And, and I think it's, it's helped me a lot.
Uh, my name is Nathaniel Bennett. I joined esports my freshman year when it was first starting up. And I remember it being like a pipe dream to play competitively because back then it was just a small club where you come in and play games for like an hour. And I really, this was awesome for me because it was something that I, I liked putting a lot of time into and I've got to see it grow. So it's awesome that now we have all these competitions that we have where we can play games with our friends, but still like have that competition and reward type thing where we can potentially get scholarship. It's just a lot of fun and I really like putting all this time into it.
Awesome, thanks, guys. So, uh, as you can see, it's, it's one of those things where, one of the nice things about during the COVID, everything, you know, everybody's doing the social distancing. We don't have to travel. I'm going to move over now to the round there. Yeah, sorry. Um, we don't have to travel because we can all do stuff from right here. Uh, we play against all teams all over the state. Uh, and then on the weekends and Mike has, has, um, set up competitions with Illinois. Uh, I'm working on stuff with some of my friends out in Missouri. You know, this is one of those things where you don't have to travel and you could still do some competition on a national scale. Uh, some of the nice things about this is that I don't also have to worry about people going through concussion protocols. Uh, you know, they, uh, they can play at home if they need to, if they're in a situation. And it's, it's just one of those things where I think it's also helping us build larger base here. Uh, typically we'll have anywhere between 20 to 40 kids in our club. And we usually sport four full varsity teams. So this year we have one JV. We could easily have two JV teams on SMITE and I believe we'll have even more kids in the Super Smash next year. So some really exciting things. I have kids, it's the number one thing that come, um, on the freshman fun night. Number one thing kids come to ask me, it's not about my class, it's, it's, what are we doing in esports? So, um, you know, it, it's great to have this. It's great to have the kids come in, see what we're doing here. And like I said, um, once they get in here and they find teammates and friends, I see them for four years, which is just an amazing thing. So, questions?
Very exciting, honestly, esports. I remember it starting when, you know, about, you know, like four years ago and it was kind of, you know, abstract. I didn't really know what it, what it entirely entailed, but now it's really exciting. I'm really happy that it's working out the way it is.
Yeah.
It's a good job.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Hey, I would just give a big thanks to Mr. Eisertlath and Mr. Dolly for all their leadership and helping support moving forward. We are really excited to get Mr. Dolly to come in this year. I know Jerry was a star as well. Um, so really solidified having that, that esports and having that continuous path there. So, um, yeah, been a good year and, uh, I appreciate all the time and hours that both of those teacher advisors have put in over, uh, this year and the prior years. So good work.
Thanks, guys.
Looks like we have approval of our amended intergovernmental.
Thanks again, guys. All right, so you might be asking, didn't we just sign this a few months ago? We did. And then Lake Geneva gave notice prior to the December 31st deadline that they were going to officially withdraw from the consortium. We had talked about that, but as a result of that, we have to update the agreement. So the only difference is it now includes Williams Day and ourselves as the last members of the consortium. Um, we're still servicing students from the other schools, but that's either with on a wish basis or they can all do our school. That's what that document is and we just need a formal approval for it.
If there's any questions? We just did this like delta.
Yeah.
Thank you for a motion to approve it.
I move to approve the amended 66.0301 intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Career and College Academy as presented.
Is there a second? To move the second to approve the amended 66.0301 intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Career and College Academy as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Gropkowski? And Mr. Reed?
Yes. Motion carried.
Regular session, the minutes of February 8th should be attached to your agenda. Any questions on those? Players looking for a motion or a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the February 8th, 2021 regular session school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
One second.
To approve the minutes of the February 8th, 2021 regular session school board meeting as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Gropkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion carried. General and other fund bills, Mr. Drun?
The general other fund bills, saving covers checks number 142, 193 through 142, 340. Wire transfers, 774 through 786. ACH checks number 263 through 291. And option renovation wire numbers, 746 through 758. 773 through 787. And combined amount of 1,276,953.82. And then there was a memo providing some official information on several of the bills in the packet along with a copy of the treasury report through the month of January.
Throw the snowball with a smaller mobile budget out the window bill?
Yeah.
Might be now.
Spring is coming, don't worry. Any other questions for Mr. Drun?
I have a question. Um, let me find it here again. Oh, the non-memetic crisis intervention, how many people covered under that? It was around $2,398. I think it was in the credit cards.
Barb?
Yes.
That is for the training of the trainers.
Well, she was reading them.
What?
How many are we training them to do that?
That is two trainers. We have four people trained in the district to train the other staff.
So that is for two people, that, that $2,398?
Um, if I'm recalling correctly, um, or it is for training, um, the rest of the Jackson staff? I'd have to look at the bill exactly.
Okay.
Um, which, I can look it up, which bill was it?
It was on the credit cards. I didn't, I didn't write it down exactly.
Okay. It is either for training, um, the Jackson staff, which a, a great number of people were trained on Friday, um, this past week, or it was for training the trainer, um, coming up in April. So either one of those. Um, but 2,000 is about what it costs to train the trainer and then it's about the same then when they train our staff. And I think there were over 20 people who were trained, um, at Jackson last week.
Okay, well, that, that's good. And then I had another question under yours. Uh, I'm not picking on you, just questions came out. Um, driver's ed, you had two students under driver's ed and there were different fees. So what were those about?
Yes, through, this is, um, through the transition readiness grant, we received money that can be used to pay for a student where a barrier, to pay for driver's education, where not getting a license is a barrier to employment for, um, transition to adult life. So, um, this money was provided through the transition readiness grant. And so, um, it was a two-part, um, payment, one for, I believe was the coursework and another was for the behind the wheel portion.
Okay, all right.
So we were able to take that barrier away for a student to be able to get his license so that he can, you know, um, be more gainfully employed once he leaves school.
That, and that's good to know because sometimes we don't think about that part of it, about getting a driver's license. Because I think for us, most of us here and our kids, it's just an automatic right. We do it, we figure out how to pay for it, but sometimes it can't be, so it's good to.
We utilized, we originally utilized the major portion of that transportation budget in that grant, Barb, to pay for a vehicle, which we purchased a vehicle. And then the money that, um, was left over, we've paid for the driver's education for the one student. And then we've also been providing vouchers for kids to be transitioned, um, to pay for VIP vouchers to transition to work experience or out to gateway to take classes.
So where do we keep this vehicle?
Um, the vehicle is parked, uh, Bill can tell you, it's a blue building over by the, by the high school.
Over by the athletic field.
Okay.
It's faded purple, not blue. It used to be called the green shed, but now it's the purple.
Okay, all right.
So that will remain, that will remain with us. And I really, instead of paying for the opportunities for the kids to be transported on VIP, which is a great learning experience as well, but I think what a long lasting impact to be able to help a student to be able to get their driver's license rather than just paying for them to go back and forth to GTC. Um, having them gain their own, uh, driver's license, I think is much more impactful for a life.
Well, I'm glad I asked.
Yeah. So it wasn't, like I said, it was a grant that I applied for and we got.
You guys are really good at getting grants. I, I'll work one more, one more comment. Is it okay if I speak, Matt?
Is it for me?
No, no. Is that okay, Matt?
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say, I was comparing the budget reports, um, that Bill also includes in there. And like the, the, we are like spot on between expenditures and revenues from last year. So that budget that, that is created in this district is just so tight. We're talking, it's, I think the, um, expenses was 49.21% this last, it was 49.52%. They really know exactly when the money's coming in, when it's going out and exactly where it's going. I just, it's phenomenal, reading it in detail. So kudos to administration and, and Bill and everybody that's involved with the budget. Okay, I'm done.
Other questions? All right, promotion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of February 22nd, 2021. Checks number 142, 193 through 142, 340. Wire number 774 to 786. ACH check numbers 263 to 291. And options renovation wire numbers 746 to 758. 773 and 787 in the combined amount of 1,276,953.82 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
To move the second to approve the general and other fund bills of February 22nd, 2021. Checks number 142, 193 to 142, 340. Wire number 774, 786. ACH check numbers 263 to 291. Optic renovation wire number 746 to 758. 773 and 778 or 787. And the combined amount of 1,276,953.82 as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Gropkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, so high school, um, on February 25th, they're holding the new Discover One Hundred Year's Program. That's our new first two of the year. The Elkhorn Area Band in our flash mob during lunch, where they're playing the book, so people can hear the conversation. The EA Press Holdout, um, called the Successful Holding, where you learn more about new inventions. Um, at the middle school, the Autobus Support Team will be holding a children's kickoff on March 18th and a pickup activity for the middle school. On Wednesday, we'll be holding a North Texas basketball tournament. The middle school hopes a lot of the more. At Tivik's Family, they'll be opening on February 20th, February 28th, on October 1st. They're working a cap visa to raise money for local education help. And from February 22nd to 26th, they will be holding the trip, people will donate. Or they will donate something that kids can pick up while they're early on. At Jackson, local classrooms and fellow teachers will be the hope of the day of school. March 4th is career day, where kids will start off their session they have had. And kids at Jackson are around, creating an international space station and just have like astronauts to celebrate tomorrow. At Westside, they're having a virtual lip sync battle where kids can report themselves using a book card. On Thursday, March 4th, they'll be holding a virtual family meeting. And for the hundredth day of school, kids are guessing up like they are 100 years old. Um, at Career and College Academy, Elkhorn New School partnered with Student Construction, where they learned a lot about more construction process, new materials and technologies and employment opportunities. Due to the cold weather, youth build students couldn't work on their home builds, but were able to move inside and continue learning skills. And then finally, we had options, um, staff and volunteers have been working hard to get their library ready for circulation in time for Read Across America Week. Um, student pictures were taken last week. Uh, many students attended a field trip to the Chino U Camp, where they were active activities like tubing and broom ball and then indoor activities like foam balls and inflatable hockey courts. And then finally, middle school and preschool students have had the option to join online yoga as a part of the medical health care and many people are taking a part of that. That is all I have.
Director's report.
Thank you. Um, so hi, Claire Bash, 12th Director of Instruction. Uh, tonight I wanted to waste some time to really just give you a secondary mini year update and talk about how we have been navigating instruction during the pandemic. So, um, to prepare for, um, instruction this year, there were a few things that needed to take place before we could even get the school year started. Uh, one of the things that we had asked teachers to do was to prepare a, um, learning plan for moving between the three different models that we had created so that they could really think about what structures and routines needed to change for them if we was on a dime from one of those models to the next model. Another thing that we asked our teachers to do was some gap planning. Um, and the gap planning was really to take a look at what were the things that didn't get taught during quarantine? And then what would teachers need to plan for in that next grade level? Uh, we cut anywhere between a third and two thirds of our curriculum during quarantine just to keep things manageable for our students and for our teachers. So that was a consideration that they needed to make. Um, and then of course, they needed to think about instruction and how that was going to change. Because right away at the secondary level, we had students coming in remotely and we had students being in person, physically distanced. And we had to have our teachers be able to balance those two different needs at the same time. So, um, we also had asked teachers in order to be able to balance that to prepare a weekly learning app every week. And this is a communication not only with our students, but also with our families. One of the biggest, oh, I wanted to use the word community, but I should do it. Uh, some of the most feedbacks that we got, um, from families was that it was really hard during quarantine to know what their lesson was going to be or what's it needed to do. Where's the Google Meet app so that I can get in? What's the assignment that my students need to do? We had teachers doing current things, um, to communicate that. And that's really hard for a family to, uh, be able to navigate that. We had to have a system, um, that was similar, um, for all teachers so we could communicate that with families and, um, make it more, uh, easy to navigate. Um, once we moved into the school year, um, and did that preparation that I was just speaking of, uh, we met with our avid instruction teams. And this is the team that really, uh, takes the lead on determining what the professional development department would be for instructors for this school year. We took a look at where we were rating on the Avid CCI, which is our metric for all we're doing, um, with embedding WICR strategies into the classroom. And to the credit of our avid instruction teams at both the middle school and the high school, uh, they said, what we really need to do is not focus on this rubric right now. We need to prepare our teachers for taking those WICR strategies that we've worked so hard to provide into our instructional practices and figure out how we're going to adapt them for remote learners and for physical distancing. They didn't want to lose those strategies because of the challenges that we were facing with dealing with both remote learners and with physical distancing. Because we know those strategies are the ones that help to build the skills that our students need to be successful. Those writing skills, those concrete skills, that driving skills. So that was our main focus, um, as far as professional development goes and the planning. So the first thing that we did was a need assessment for those remote learners. How are we going to do those strategies with the remote learners? Now, the kind of tech tools that were free during quarantine that teachers got to play with, they got to utilize, but then they cut off that free service. Um, and so we had to figure out and prioritize what was most important for us to purchase and what was most leveraged, um, to be able to teach those strategies. So we were able to pay for some of those tech tools through the CARES Act. And then the other ones that are not highlighted in gray are departments paid for and students paid for through their budget. And you can see we asked specifically who would actually use it, not just giving it to who that we were being physically responsible with. I'm sure, I appreciate it. So, um, anyway. Then we took a look at those challenges that the teachers were facing and we really kind of, um, created four big categories of challenges that they had to face to balance both in-person and remote students. And we said, we have to take our WICR, we have to provide professional development, take our WICR strategies and adapt them for remote learners. How do we take our WICR strategies and adapt them for physical distancing? Because a lot of those WICR strategies are like collaborative work, working with each other. And so how do you still do that? We didn't want our remote students to be passive learners, sitting on the other side of the Google Meet. We had to learn some strategies to get them involved into what was going on in the in-person classroom. And I'm going to be super honest, we had all kinds of great technology and we did some training prior, but the training and then the actual practice of using things, um, is a little bit different. So we had some troubles with microphones and amplifiers. We had some trouble with hearing kids on the other end of the Google Meet. Um, for them to be able to be prepared, all class members, for them to hear what's going on in the classroom. Lots of challenges like that. So, um, we were able to leverage both teachers at the middle school and at the high school. I have this strategy that I've adapted for physical distancing. I can show you how I do that. I have this and I've adapted it for remote learning. We had to go around and like, not every. We had to go around and like, not everybody had these things. We had to figure out who had figured out a way around this. And then we placed them on this with a choice board. And this really has been an exciting way for professional development to happen. It's something that I would say has been a celebration that's come out of a pandemic. It's a voice and choice, and the professionals development needs that the teachers have. An opportunity for anytime learning. So I might not have learned this during that COVID in-service, but I know it's here. And when I get to the strategy that I want to use in January, I can go back and learn how to do it for my kids. Which has been really, really nice. Also, I present here, they said that it's a little bit frustrating when they present during in-service, and they don't get to go and learn from other people. And they're like, we're really feeling insecure about balancing remote students and in-person students, and we want to learn at the same time too. So the video allowed for ways to be able to do that. So the teachers created videos between both middle school and the high school, anywhere between two and six minutes, and the time was carved out for them to learn during in-service. So one of the things that we also wanted to make sure that we focused on in our instructional practices was continuing to build high-performing student relationships. Because we know that that high level of learning is not going to happen without a high-performing relationship. So we really got very granular this year and focused on our marginalized students to ensure that they feel like they also belong in our school. And so throughout the course of our in-services this year, we've been doing a series called The Power of Word. And we've been talking about the language that we use that creates a sense of belonging instead of othering for these different marginalized groups. So we're speaking specifically about our students of color, our LGBTQ plus students, and our students of poverty. Making sure that we're using an asset-based language, which has been really beneficial for not only our teachers in being able to speak about students in a positive way, but it's also been able to create teachable moments. I hear things in the classroom, and then you correct those. We also want it's important for us to learn about the history of marginalized groups and also learn more about how we can create a sense of belonging in our classrooms and within our schools. So we started a book study with our summary year teachers. These two books are books about our students of color. And then these books are for our LGBTQ plus students and how to create that safe and positive learning environment for our students of poverty as well. Okay, and another huge challenge that we had was we obviously had a lot of teachers in and out. And we wouldn't have been able to do any of these instructional things, balance in-person students and remote students, if it wasn't for the individuals who responded to Jason's call for help. We had 14 people from the community and seven signed up to be substitute teachers and get their substitute teacher license, and seven people want to become classroom supervisors. Now, the difference between the two is that supervisors have, they're willing to be somebody who would be in the room when the teacher would be teaching remotely to students. Substitute teachers get a license, they have an associate degree. So I really can't speak more highly of these people who were willing to come in and help us. We, when the walls opened in our mess and our grades were so high, we had to go remote much quicker if it wasn't for them. So yeah, we can't thank them enough for being willing to do that. The classroom supervisor was a position that was created this year through flexibility with PTIs. So they gave us a little bit of flexibility with who we brought in. I hope so.
Sorry to interrupt, I've been doing my good thing with it all.
There's a lot of work going into creating an onboarding process for that. And it's super beneficial to be able to have those people. Oh, and how do you? Why do you cackle over there?
Technically, it's still, it's basically having the physical body in the room, but the licensed teacher's still delivering the instruction. So yeah, there really isn't even a category. Classroom supervisor is just some of the remaining to fill that slot. Because we weren't comfortable, and we questioned, and we kind of talked. And we've used other strategies too at the high school level for utilizing, doing the online learning where we'd have multiple classes in the cafeteria. Because we didn't have the bodies to fill the rooms, but the teachers could teach from home. And then we'd have one supervisor in the cafeteria supervising. What was the most important classroom?
You get five in there.
Five, yeah.
Yeah, we had six in there one day.
Yeah, go ahead, Nan. What was that, six?
We had six, six different classes in the auditorium at the, at the worst of it with one person, which worked out really well because the teachers were teaching in anyway and had the kids engaged.
Since it seats eight hundred and eighty, you know, six classes, it was probably one hundred and twenty-one kids. We did space it out really well.
Yeah, they, they were all six feet apart. We could manage it.
That's something we really want to have to repeat, but yeah.
But it's a nice option, I will say that.
Yeah, I was just wondering about this, it's fun.
I've never seen this, like, I don't know, I mean, I haven't been doing this that long, but as a coordinator, like, I've never seen this kind of number. We've never had that kind of response.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's okay. That's all right. So how have we been doing with our plan for instruction? What we like to do is kind of look at the data and see if what we've done and what we've planned is actually working. So this is our fall readiness data from the high school. And our students were able to take a practice ACT at the junior level and then other ACT suite tests at the sophomore and freshman level. You can see the top arrows. This kind of tells us how our students are comparing from fall 2019 to fall 2020. And you can see here, there's celebration. We're not that far off, we didn't lose that much ground with quarantine. And the benchmark data is where ACT expects students to be at at readiness level at the end of that grade level. Does that make sense? So I just kind of look at that, I don't need to explain a ton. But there's a lot of celebration here, we're not very far off in any of our metrics. And it's manageable with the goals that we need to make from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Any questions? Go ahead and go.
I think, I would just reiterate, that was something that we also saw at the lower grade levels. We were very pleasantly surprised that we didn't see a significant academic drop off this fall compared to last year.
That's right. So we don't have real data for you March 9th. So that's when everybody will take all this again. The actual ACT, not a practice, but then the practice plan and the floor for the sophomore. For the sophomore. Some challenges that we're facing right now at the high school. If you look at our percent of students failing one class during trimester one in comparison to other years, we are up. And there's a lot of disruptions that are happening to our learning environment right now. There's a learning curve for our teachers. Our students are in and out of the classroom constantly. Remote learning is a challenge for some students. We have some students who are choosing to be remote and learning that that's not really working out for them. So there's a curve that's happening here, and we need things to mitigate this, just like we do with our masks.
Real quick, Sarah, just to give some context, this was a discussion point in the superintendent meetings. Just anecdotally, from the superintendents that were in that meeting and having discussions, the ones that, you know, weren't face-to-face five days a week, there wasn't a single one that I can recall that had a failure rate less than 25% of their students having at least one. And one of the schools in our conference had 45%.
Oh, my goodness.
So they were really looking at, yeah. They were really struggling and a lot of kids out there. So having us, you know, in that face-to-face environment has given a lot of stability there. Even though it's a much higher rate than what we'd like, and it's definitely higher than the past, it's significantly longer.
What it could be. It's kind of been our thing this year, it could be worse. So, I might want to go back, sorry, I wanted to go ahead. So again, some celebrations at the middle school. Our work with embedding reading skills in all classes, I Darts all the way up through the LA West. Your math is carrying that load is starting to pay off. Our reading inventory supports, our speed on grade level for reading has jumped significantly at the middle school. You might have heard it called the SRI. They dropped the S part last week, it was not anymore, so now it's a reading. Okay, yeah. Here's our winter math data at the middle school. So it's a little confusing. If you look on the far right, that's our winter data for sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. The column to the left is our fall data. So you can do that comparison. We're not growing a lot, but we're growing overall. It's not so much what's changed, we're going. Specifically, if you look at the other arrow on the left, you can see that our sixth grade has the most growth that we need. Really need to work on sixth grade. Seventh grade is pretty good, and then eighth grade is knocking it out of the park. So we know our spots, and we know what we need to be working on. This is our reading data. And this is our math data. Same spots. But safe situation, actually. Any questions? So in January and February is our mid-year, and that's when we do some pivot planning. I'm a friends fan, it's fantastic. So we've done some curriculum pivot in our planning at the, at in-service, where we're looking specifically at how we can embed those skills that we need to grow in our future lessons, in our, in our future unit planning. Get to those skills by the end of the year again, and really make sure our kids have them. We instituted a guaranteed recovery system at the high school. And that's specifically to make sure that ahead of those summative assessments, we're giving kids private support to learn and to relearn so that we can lessen those Ds and those Fs. At the middle school, focusing on essential skills during that meantime to make sure our kids have those skills that we know that they need, that are measured on that math test. And then continuing to remind families that it's really important to be in school if you're not. Or if you're not quarantined, because that's where most of our kids are mostly. That's our mid-year update at the secondary level. I'll give this back. Any questions?
I've said it before, but I'm impressed by the staff and proud of everyone for it. I mean, this is just an incredible undertaking, to be honest. I mean, last spring, around this time, and we're talking about the budget hearing coming up, and that's basically where this all kind of sort of happened, whatever, about a month, what, two weeks from now or so. And at that point, basically, we had like a whole education system built on collaboration and next to each other and discussing things in person. And all of a sudden, they go and turn out the window, and we had to like, you know, week, come up with some brand-new educational scheme. And I mean, we basically circled the wagons and said, what are we going to do? And Quick came up with something. You know, and it didn't end there, you know, we went back to school. And yeah, we went back to somewhat normal school, I guess you could say, but not really normal. So we, so we came up with, you know, you came up with a proper plan. And then it worked out, and you can tell from the numbers that it's actually working. And, you know, we all did it together.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, I can't, yeah, our team's amazing.
I'm going to say.
Yeah. Yeah, and when I, yeah, when I hear what's happening in other states and other parts of, even of our own state, it, I, I'm just, I, every time I talk to somebody, I'm like, so proud of what you guys have done. And it really is amazing. And I love that you guys want to be, you know, that you want the kids to be in school. And you, you've done so much to make that happen. And I'm so proud of all of you.
It really has been a team effort. And I can't, our teachers have done amazing work.
Yeah.
There's nothing else, it showed families just how important, yeah, the school, the school is, or the schools are to. Kind of for granted, but then this all happened. That shot right back to the front center that everything revolves, it's the around education.
Yeah.
And we're going to be after a viewer weekend. Very proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me run into our COVID.
All right, yeah, let me go ahead and share from our update center, let's see. So what we're looking at overall is we do have currently two positive confirmed cases. Sorry, just the overall numbers are way down. And I know from the timing sample, I believe tomorrow, I will, once again, but I believe tomorrow these all drop off. So.
Don't send anything out.
Yeah.
I will not send that out, but we are still very frustrated with this West Side situation. It was a case that not a single one of our students, aside from the student who was sick, needed to be quarantined and the family fell over the property. And yes, student was still sent to school after having gone out to get it. So, yeah, frustrating. Unfortunate and frustrating, yes. So I don't know what to do to reiterate that, because it puts kids out there. And wants to fix kids in the future. Right. Anyways, the, I'll look at the county data as well, which will show our area. If you want to look at the school data, it's there, reflects our trend, though. It's, we've almost dropped all of it in the zero, which is great. And the data, this is the entire resident area within our school district. And again, ignore Whitewater and Burlington, because they're only county with people within the LA County boundary, but they're divided by the whole. So our rate is the lowest we've been since the school year started. And the low at 6.44, so, you know, we, events like prom, if we're in the low to a moderate level, then we plan to hold those and forward with it. So we're, we're doing good right now, and not on the low, we're not far from the first candidate. That includes educators that'll be coming up starting March 5th. Any question on any of the COVID updates or today? We have had discussions with the city for years in relationship to this piece of property here. Let me pull this. All right. So this is our school district, the 1887 building, this is Jackson right here. The orange circle is the city lot, which includes the Harris Park Ball Diamonds here. You'll notice up at the top, this is, I don't recall the name of this, is this also a Harris Field, or is that the? This is Harris Red, this is the Varstey Field.
Colt Field.
Colt Field, right. So you'll notice this property line cuts through left center. So our property, we own left field, the third baseball. And the city owns the rest of that field. When the city put in a lot of money into upgrading the Ball Diamonds around the city and also here at the Varstey Field, the school district agreed to a 10-year plan to pay them $10,000 a year for the 10 years to assist with the upgrades of those fields. What has come up recently is some discussions around, and I probably triggered this because the point is that this little section right here is the playground.
Yep.
Yeah, for Jackson. Now, we purchased the equipment to install it, maintain. Now, we purchased the equipment to install it, maintain this, but technically it's on city property. And a part of that is from time to time, we have some individuals in the community who like to come over and swing really high on the kids' wings and utilize language that's, you know, not fitting for an elementary school, especially around elementary school or teacher dismissal. And when we work with law enforcement in the past and somewhere, they're somewhat limited because it's a city property. So we had a discussion with the city, asked, hey, would you guys be interested in, you know, we're the entity that utilizes all this space for the most part. Aside from the Little League that uses Harris Red, they, the city really doesn't have any programs that use Colts or varsity. So we want to have some discussions around if they'd be interested in beaming this property over to us. We would assume responsibility for maintaining and, you know, handling this and, you know, owning that. What we came to in the initial discussions, we said we'd bring it back to the board just to discuss conceptually to kind of get a straw poll for where people are adding interest. Initially, we looked at talking about carving out the playground area and then carving out the varsity field north. After we thought about it more, Bill, myself, and John, we kind of felt that we'd rather just do it rather than having funky lines and carving it out because we have a shared use agreement with the city that would, would pretty much, our sense was we'd pretty much rather have it, just deed it all over or not it and just leave it as it is rather than dividing it up in wonky ways still. But I want to get your sense and feelings. Is that something that you want us to pursue a formal proposal or thoughts and relationships? Obviously, if we assume control of the property, then we assume the liability for the maintenance of the upkeep. The flip side is right now, we don't have varsity ball field that we're technically in our ownership. So the money we put in, so that's really, yeah, the city feels, I don't see that changing anytime soon. But there's, yeah, it's just the only space that we utilize on a regular basis that we don't own or have control of.
I don't see why not.
Yeah.
And all of it, controlling, especially the playground area for the ever kids. That's not all of it. No, I just, I, yeah. It's to divide it all and then have this bottom part and the city still has this part and it sounds like more of a headache.
Yeah, definitely go for it, all of it or.
Yeah, I agree. All or nothing.
I mean, just trying to draw the property lines again would be just a pain, you know? Surveyors coming in and trying to figure this out. And then you'd end up with something cut off and then just.
What are we talking about, like total acres right there? It means that we're putting together schools to buy it and when they eat it, they're not.
Yeah, I was just going to say, is there going to be an expected, you know, are they giving?
We talked about just, you know.
Can you head over?
Yeah. We didn't talk about any purchase of price since we both utilize it and they wouldn't have the liability of maintenance.
And we work well with rent department, so it will be used.
Okay.
That was kind of a.
Yeah. Yeah, my feeling is all or nothing. Would we look at doing some.
And from their perspective, I mean, they spent, I think when we talked, they brought budgetary figures. They were spending well over $20,000 a year just.
Just so many tenants.
Maintenance, yeah. So there's a big benefit to not have that ability to do that.
Would we look at doing some kind of a fencing at all for the playground that would help us have greater control over who is using the playground during the day?
We could do that.
None of our other schools have.
No, but the, the.
We don't open up till public parks.
Right. And, and West Side Playground is, is clearly on school property.
I mean, if, I guess, is that, is that a problem? I just, I guess I wasn't aware that it's a problem, but it's a problem in that particular park. Maybe we need to.
The playground, you know, the playground has been, the other stuff, which is more of a problem on teenage behavior, but it's not necessarily seen publicly is the dugouts.
Yeah.
And the fortifying lines, the stash location.
Yeah.
And the dugouts, there's not a lot of visibility.
Right, exactly.
Something that, to be frank, I would probably recommend, if we own, to put up a security camera.
Yeah, I was going to say, is there like, I don't, I, I.
There's lights on the varsity.
They're not there at night.
Yeah, there's lights on the varsity field and Harris Red.
Okay. But security camera.
So what I'm hearing is I think we'll go back to the city, the parks and rent in particular really want to do this build and the pavilion gets some niche part of that. So I don't know if there'll be really any significant interest.
Well, it was interesting, a number of years ago, the Booster Club and parents of baseball teams put a significant amount of time, money into restoring that though we need to make it usable for user concessions. Shortly after we did that, they didn't allow us to use it anymore. And so that was, that was tough. So it would be better if we had control over that.
Yeah. And that's, there's no guarantee in years down the road with the different city councils or different school.
Exactly.
You know, that agreement still is in place or would really be in a buy if for some reason they decide, well, we're going to develop.
Yeah.
Or, you know, you guys go, they'll be evolved at somewhere.
Exactly.
There is not another varsity side field.
No, not at all.
Okay, I think we'll go back to the city and share with them and we'll bring any formal proposals to the board if considered either way. That, when it comes to a formal proposal, we would put it in the closed session.
The one positive working relationship to the other positive things, we talked with the city about updating that walking path between the high school and Jackson. And they finally agreed that we could share the cost of that. So right now, that's kind of one of our maintenance items, the penalty company that has a pretty bad shape, you know?
The sidewalk path?
The sidewalk path, yeah.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah. A lot of the kids that hang out.
A lot of back and forth.
Whether it's from the high school and there's an outlet.
Yeah.
The door is back here in Jackson, they've plugged it in.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of like walking on the moon with water craters and that. All right.
There's a run of it.
I think it's the drainage. There's a huge puddle that forms in between the school and the playground.
Yeah, so. And a recommendation, the district minister personnel. Yeah. All right. So on our personnel side, we have a number of updates there. We have the resignation of the timber card custodian, Elizabeth Rellington. We want to thank her for her service as she produces a new opportunity. We want to thank Coach Jeff Brown for his years of service as the girls' basketball coach. He won't return in that more next year. We want to thank Bianca Mahoney, who has resigned as a girls' soccer assistant coach. We have the appointment of Chris McWernan as a high school assistant baseball coach who he plays Jason Lawrence for the upcoming season. We want to welcome Brittany Nelson as a middle school track assistant coach. Nicole Hamaya as a middle school track assistant coach. Lynn Rovers is a middle school track assistant coach. And Kelsey Erickson is a middle school track coach. I congratulate Jason Allen and John Handel for finding replacements.
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for February 21st. Is there a second? So I move the second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for February 22nd, 2021.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. Adama.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yeah.
Mr. Scaro.
Yes.
Mr. Gerkowski.
Yeah.
Mr. Reed.
Yes. Motion carried.
All right, we've got one gift this evening. The Serpik family has donated an Alex Hardest Studio Super Art table and two benches valued at $200 to West Side Elementary.
Need for motion to approve our, yeah?
I move to accept the generous school gift, a gift as presented.
So move the second to accept the generous school gift of the Serpik family as presented. Pro call.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart. Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. Adama. Mrs. Ray. Mr. Scaro.
Yes.
Mr. Gerkowski. Mr. Reed.
Yes. Parking lot request.
All right. If you're trying to hear, here are the parking lot requests. Yes. Do you want me to read through each one?
No.
I didn't think so. Julie does a nice job of negotiating, navigating this and making sure all the group that requests access get a piece of that. Well, the kids find it pretty loud.
Yeah, no kidding.
I don't know if there'll be any, but this year, but we'll hope.
Questions?
I move to approve the 2021 parking lot request as presented.
Is there a second?
Okay.
I move the second to approve the 2021 parking lot request as presented. Pro call.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. Adama.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scaro.
Yes.
Mr. Gerkowski.
Yeah.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
All right. We're in the early stages of reviewing our wellness policy to complete the triennial assessment due in June. That was a one-year delay thanks to COVID last year. For our call three, we're giving stakeholders a board member. Is there anyone here that would like to work on the wellness? Cause Ellen, that's, I think, yeah. Okay. I'll let Joni know. And Ellen works with that group to put that together. Let's see, just want to give you a heads up that Joni, the husband and I testify tomorrow before the regarding the open enrollment bill, which was sponsored by Representative Almack. We had it, it was set to get passed at five points support last year in a different provisional format. And it got tabled or dropped when COVID hit. So she picked it back up this year. This bill would remove the cap on the number of open enrollment applications a family can do if they've been denied by other schools. So currently, there's a cap that you can only apply to three districts via open enrollment in a calendar year. So if you're a family and you applied for three districts in the spring and didn't get accepted to any of those three, and then you go to apply during the current open enrollment period, you get denied, you can't, the way the current law is, you can't, you're not allowed to that new school district. So unfortunately, we have the experience with some kids and families who were in desperate situations. You know, who'd been expelled in front of case and were looking for an online school opportunity. And because they'd been denied by three other districts, they had nowhere else to go. And we were not allowed to provide them services. That's where this came up. It has five persons before, so that's really screw up in our test numbers, it should be good. And then school board budget update Saturday, March 13th. Holy, wow. 8:30 AM. We're going to invite all directors in here. All right.
That feels pretty exciting.
Yeah.
What are we going to do when they're shut off?
Yep.
What are we going to do? I said, I said last year was pretty exciting because that was what we did, we had the discussion of what are we going to do? They're going to shut off the school.
Right. Yeah, that was my, that was my birthday and that was like the last time we went out.
I can't believe there's some school that's still our home.
I know, I know.
Okay, that's it.
Mr. Wolf, is there? Possible.
All right, Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart. Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel. Mr. Adama.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scaro.
Yes.
Mr. Gerkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.